Order certain pledge.
Want to leave some spirit of the United States of America. To be repaid for wishes fans, one nation under God, and in this long, we're literally just.
Good evening, everybody. We will start with tonight's celebration of excellence. Turn things over to the superintendent.
Great, thank you very much. So we're going to start with the DAR award tonight. And the Daughters of the American Revolution Award is being awarded to Michaela Maynard. So I'd like to offer her congratulations. But unfortunately, Michaela could not be here with us tonight due to a prior commitment, but I'm going to read you a little bit. She deserves to have this read. The Daughters of the American Revolution was established in eighteen ninety by a group of pioneering women in our nation's capital. Who wanted to perpetuate the memory of the men and women who fought to make our country free and independent. DAR members are passionate about educating the youth of America and contributing to schools and student programs in a variety of ways. And in support of that, the DAR Good Citizenship and Scholarship Contest was created in nineteen thirty-four. To provide scholarships and awards to outstanding students throughout the country. Each year, teachers from high schools across the country select students from the senior class who demonstrate dependability. Service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. As I shared, this year's recipient is Michaela Maynard. Since ninth grade, Michaela has and continues to make a very positive contribution to the school and the surrounding community. She has worked tirelessly to have a positive impact on teachers and peers. She actively participates on Student Council and contributes to all events. She joined the volleyball team in ninth grade and quickly became a leader amongst her peers. She strives to make sure everyone's voice is heard and that they work together so that they are successful. Her course load is very rigorous and she continues to push herself and others. Michaela is a great role model for her peers and has always been willing to help out with new students. In the classroom, she will advocate for herself and for classmates to get clarification or additional support to understand fully what is being taught. Wherever Michaela goes, she brings a lot of positive energy with her and helps everyone feel more comfortable when she is around. Offer congratulations to Michaela and her family. Our next award is the Hobie Award, and I'm going to ask Emily to Donna to come right up here. Congratulations, Emily.
Stand at the table there. Mr. Sully is going to take a couple of photos and we have.
Great, okay. Since nineteen fifty-eight, the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Program, better known as HOBE, has provided leadership development training to positively impact the lives of thousands of high school students in the U.S. and abroad annually. HOBE's program allows school sophomores to realize their leadership talents and apply them in becoming effective ethical leaders in their home, school, workplace, and community. Students attend a three-day seminar and participate in hands-on leadership activities. Meet leaders in their state and explore their own personal leadership skills while learning how to make a positive impact on their community. Teachers nominate a grade ten student who exhibits the following skills: outstanding communication, critical thinking, creative problem solving, strong decision-making, sensitivity to others, charismatic personality, courage to speak out, and challenge and interest in community service. Emily received multiple teacher nominations. She has and continues to make a very positive impact on Bolton High School. She carries a rigorous course load and performs well in all of her classes. Emily is seen as a creative thinker who asks strong questions. She also challenges her peers to step up and is not afraid to push back when she disagrees with them. She is strong, kind, funny, and delightful, and she attacks her classwork by looking outside of the box and not just giving easy answers. Emily not only challenges herself in the classroom, but she also plays an integral role in robotics and tennis. She also expresses herself through the arts by participating in drama and the art club. We are very proud that Emily will represent Bolton High School at the upcoming HOBE Leadership Conference. Congratulations, Emily, to you and your family. Well deserved. Chair O'Neill has a certificate for you. Well done. Thank you. Congratulations again. Next, it is my honor to share this year's recipient of the Community Leadership Workshop Award, Reagan Connor. Reagan, come on up. The Community Leadership Workshop, better known as CLU, is HOBE's free introductory one-day leadership program for high school freshmen that is designed to help develop critical thinking skills by actively involving participants in experiential learning and critical dialogue. HOBE-CLU students participate in group activities, engage with local community leaders, and conduct community service projects. Clues are organized, developed, and implemented by local volunteers, HOBE partners, and HOBE alumni. The CLU is awarded to a ninth grader Bolton High School faculty. Were asked to nominate a student that they felt possesses the following skills and traits: outstanding leadership potential, strong communication skills, critical thinking, creative problem solving, strong decision-making, sensitivity to others, charismatic personality, as well as the courage to speak out and to challenge. Reagan also received multiple nominations for her leadership skills. In the classroom, Reagan works hard and is a great advocate. She's always willing to offer assistance to anyone who needs it and is proving to be a very strong role model for her classmates. Reagan willingly goes above and beyond in class to encourage others and to make them feel included. She works hard in the classroom and always comes in with a positive can-do attitude, ready to give her best. She is never afraid to share her thoughts in class discussions and will make sure everyone is included. Reagan is actively involved with sports and takes a leadership role in the student community. She's been attending after-school activities and taking photos to help with the yearbook and different school initiatives. Reagan is proving to be an all-around leader and will put to good use what she learns at CLU right here at Bolton High School. Reagan, congratulations to you and your family. Chair O'Neill has a certificate as well. Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you.
And that concludes our Celebration of Excellence for this evening. So those of you that are here for the Celebration of Excellence, you are more than welcome to stay, or if you would like to go, this is your opportunity. Mr. Vale?
Yeah.
Wonderful to see you, sir.
He'll be around.
Yeah, yeah.
Come visit me, Dave. We'll have a cup of coffee.
Oh, that'll be fun.
All right, moving along, comments from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment this evening? Sleep that deep. Addition to the agenda, we're going to move G1, which is the BCS Washington DC trip, to D1, which is now.
So I would like to introduce Jessica Peltier, who is going to provide the board an overview with the Washington DC trip. And I would like to thank her publicly for taking over what I believe to be an incredibly important experience for our middle schoolers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have lots of help. Donna and Ally are both helping me, so.
Thank you, Donna and Ally.
So, good evening. I am Jessica Peltier. I am here seeking approval for our Washington DC trip. This will be our third year, and it's pretty much the same trip that we've done in the past that Rick Lambert has done. We are, the dates that we have so far are, not so far, that we have are March twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. It's pretty much the same exact trip. We're using the same company, Destinations Unlimited, the same tour guide, Julie. We would just like the approval of the board. The cost is eight hundred dollars per student that includes insurance, so that insurance is not optional. All parents are to buy into it, so there is a cancel for any reason, which is seventy-five percent of your money back with all of the documentation through the company. And then there's also a death or a sickness clause where you can get up to your hundred percent back. And that's up to the date of the trip, as long as you have a doctor's note. So are there any questions?
Yes, which family responsible for paying for?
They are. We are hoping to have around eighty students, if not a few more, that would be lovely. We also are, I've contacted our PTA. We are in the midst of our big, huge fundraiser where we raised a lot of money and they helped us out very generously last time. We are also doing a fundraiser starting up next Wednesday, where about forty percent of what the students earn or what they so they they raise the money and they get about forty percent of that money put directly towards their trip. And we are asking if families have trouble, they should come and contact me personally, and we'll try to make things work to see how much they are able to help out.
Has there ever been a situation where there was someone who couldn't attend because they didn't have the finance?
No.
No, there has never. No, that, even though, yeah, I've never done that.
And we worked with families on our last trip and with a couple of years ago. And what families can afford and the PTA, and then we have money, so we made sure the child wanted to go there.
Plus, the kids can do the fundraising to help offset the costs as well. So there's, there's multiple layers there so that we can ensure that anybody that wants to go gets to go.
Yeah, and honestly, that's a great question, and the price isn't much more than it was when they went two years ago. It's just a little bit more for, due to the food costs increased over the couple of two years.
It's two nights' stay?
It's a two nights' stay. We would leave BCS at seven AM on Wednesday and come back on Friday night. And we're following the board's protocol of the one to seven ratio, so, you know, seven adults to the one child. Just kidding. That would be fun. See how it is for them to take care of us. And so it's, everything is pretty much, but we got, everything is there, the same itinerary, same, we are changing the restaurants and for one of the places because it closed the one that they had gone to in the past.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jessica?
So could we have a motion, please, to approve the twenty twenty-five BCS Washington DC trip? Some.
A second.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed or abstaining? Alrighty, a great time.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Appreciate it.
Alright, do we have any other additions?
Do not.
Alright, routine business and the approval of minutes. Could we have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education Business Meeting?
Some. Second.
Is there any questions, comments, or edits on these minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed or abstaining?
I'm staying here.
Alright. Board of Education Committee reports, finance.
Okay, the board has expanded thirteen percent this year, and that's the same as last year. And there were a few transfers and, of course, special education, it's an ever-changing landscape, and finally getting that correct. And I'll hand it over to the superintendent.
Thank you very much. So we have just a few transfers to go over. The first is a reclassification to cover shortfall for online subscription to Kessler Science. Another reclass to cover Library Media Center Online Services shortfall. Another reclass to cover BHS principal desktop monitor display computer system. A reclass to cover subscription for the twenty-four, twenty-five NFHS network subscription, so we can stream live and on-demand high school sports from the gym. And then, lastly, a reclass to cover a new portable hallway display unit for events and special news at the high school.
So do we have a motion to accept the September transfers, please?
Most September transfers.
I'll second.
Any question or comments about these? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Do we have any more finances?
No.
Sorry, on to curriculum. We did have a curriculum meeting yesterday. We discussed the reading and assessment updates and PD and how the new reading programs are going and also discussed future events, mostly course and text approvals. A emergency medical responder course we're looking to add for next year, which is sort of a step toward earning EMT. It's not quite an EMT, but it gives you the opportunity to get close to being an EMT, and there's a bridge course that will allow students to get EMT without much additional effort. We do have a teacher that is willing to teach this. It's a nice opportunity, I think, but we will be looking for presentation that in December. And it's also primarily grant-funded, which has already been approved, right? That almost approved it. Also, world language, our current text has been discontinued, and we are looking at a couple of programs. So we want a print plus a digital option and use the same publisher, ideally for French and Spanish. There was an option that did not have that, which we probably eliminated, so we'll be looking at that in the next month or two. Also, social studies, looking at a pending textbook adoption to align with the new standards, which were approved last year. So the Curriculum Committee will be getting a president on that in December, and we'll be bringing it forward to the board, so sort of previewing coming events. And on to personnel. The Personnel Committee has met a couple of times, or at least once since the last meeting, and we discussed our negotiations with paraprofessionals and admin assistants, and we will be moving forward with that in coming months. To BHS Student Representatives report.
Right. The high school recently hosted its annual college fair. There were over seventy representatives from schools across New England and the rest of the country. Both juniors and seniors were exposed to opportunities available to them after high school, not just college, but also the military and technical schools. School sports teams have been performing very well. The girls soccer team won their senior night game this week. The boys soccer team has an excellent record. And both cross-country teams have done well at their meets, with the boys finishing among the top schools frequently. In addition, they, yesterday, they beat Suffolk, and this is the first time Suffolk has lost a meet in sixteen years. So a big congratulations. Tonight, the girls volleyball team has their annual pink game, celebrate breast cancer awareness, which is why my colleague is not here tonight. The Student Council has planned an upcoming spirit week in the week leading up to the homecoming dance. We have multiple exciting spirit days planned, like Adam Sammler Day, Wacky Wednesday, and a Class Colors Day. The Student Council and the rest of the student body are very excited for the homecoming dance, which will be under the lights date. We'll start selling tickets very soon.
Thank you, Andrew, very much. And Grace could not be with us tonight. Feel free to say, Andrew, but I'm sure you want to go down and watch volleyball.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Alright, on to community meeting reports. Do we have any PTA things that would like to?
And she raised from the back.
I saw you back there.
Yeah, so we think the state fundraiser has kicked off. The students will walk on the sixteenth, so next week. There are already halfway towards, there's twenty thousand dollars, or twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars a goal. We're also starting to put together stuff for the playground improvements. We've had a state senator, M.D. Robbins, coming in on Wednesday, Friday, after school, to kind of take a look around and help opening with a state funding and grants all of the applicable for us because we're doing it for accessibility for students with mobility issues. And then we are also gearing up to start preparing for our gala in springtime and to kind of switch around a little bit. Maybe call, there's some new ideas, call during the afternoon, maybe at a brewery instead of our normal late-night parents-only.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other community meetings to report on?
I attended the meeting of the Bolton Scholarship Fund in September. It was our first meeting of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Our annual meeting is in a couple Mondays coming up. So this would be a great time if there's anyone who wants to get involved with the Bolton Scholarship Fund to join. Always looking for new board members or members in general.
Any other meetings that we attended? I think there were any. Right, I will now turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent of Schools report.
Alright, great. Thank you very much. So I'm going to start by turning it over to Director of Teaching and Learning, Monica, to share the survey data that we collected last year that our teacher leaders and administrators worked with over the summer to craft our school improvement plans. And then I will be turning it over to Daryl and to Joe and their leadership teams to share about our school plans. Thank you, Monica.
So as you know, each spring, we survey our parents, students, and teachers. The data that we collect, so it's open to switching, maybe it's not. The information that we collect is used to make decisions for the coming year. The incredible team of people are here tonight. Both leadership teams meet through the summer, review all of the academic data, our survey data, and make decisions regarding school governance and what the needs are for school improvement. The questions focus on key areas. So much like last year, we sort of clustered these into areas that we saw in friends. So those included homeschool partnerships, school environment, and instructional practices. The questions, a sampling of the questions that are in there are forced school, family, and community partnership. If parents feel like their teacher, child's teacher keeps them informed. If they feel the school values what they have to say, communication is positive and that they're being communicated with right. Instructional practices, classes challenge students to think critically, the school challenges my child, teachers make adjustments. So you can get an idea of what types of questions, most of the questions in each cluster actually. School staff respect and value diversity of families, adults treat students with respect, my child likes to go to school. Very simple questions. Do you like to go to school? Do you like to work here? Do you feel safe when you're here? Does the environment support learning? Do students feel like they have a sense of belonging? Do parents feel like they have a sense of belonging and they belong to the school community? There are other topics that only have one question. All of the results, question by question, will be posted tomorrow, so they'll be on the website. This is just a really general overview for tonight before we introduce the schools. So there was one question about extracurricular activities, one about access to technology, one about the school facilities.
I'm going to just chime in here for a second before you go any further. So the CSDE has been charged in the latest round of legislation with coming up with a group who's going to decide what the survey will be for all districts, because it's now going to be a requirement that all districts do it, although we have been doing it. And you either have to adopt the survey that they're going to give you, or the survey has to meet whatever criteria it is that they're going to come up with. So I'm not sure when that's happening and when we're going to receive it, so I don't know if this spring survey will be this exact survey. It may be this spring, but it may not be for the following spring. So that's a, stay tuned, because I have no idea, none of us do, yet, what is going to be given to us.
Probably make it do before they tell you what it is.
Possibility, yes. We don't know when it's happening, just note that.
Thank you, Monica.
So this is just going to be a very quick overview that you can see visually. We'll start with the parent surveys. They're going to be in the same order of positive school, family communication, school environment, instructional practices. Overwhelmingly, we have people who feel, who agree and feel very strongly that these things are in place. The middle bar is for neutral, like they don't agree or disagree, or maybe that, we do make everyone answer every question. So sometimes they might think, I don't know anything about this, so I'm just going to pick them up. But overwhelmingly, you can see that there's a lot of positive work here. We also have a number of respondents. We would love to see more people responding. So we could get much more accurate data, but still, twenty-five is better than when we used to do them on paper. So, parents surveys again, our student surveys, I mean, there's a lot of blue here, and the principals are going to go into much more detail. This is just a general overview so that you can see that we are continuing to trend in a positive direction. And staff survey, which I don't believe we presented last year, but also staff are feeling very strongly that they enjoy being here, they like being in the district, they feel like administration communicates well with them, and they feel like they can ask questions and come to anyone that they need to, which is overwhelmingly positive. And with no further ado, I am going to turn it over to Principal Geard to go into some more detail with his leadership team about what we did with their results and the work they did.
Thank you, Monica.
Alright, first, I'm going to introduce our leadership team. You guys could stand up, and I'll turn it over to a few of the leaders who are going to present our school plan for this year. So Mrs. Keller, her assistant principal.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. Mrs. Eaton, Special Education, she's out sick today. Wish she could be here. Mrs. Richard, Special Education, she just had a baby. Wish she could be here as well. Mrs. Biggany, K five E L A. Mrs. Mikulochi, K five math. Mrs. Mishriki, K five science. Mrs. Watch, K five social studies. Mrs. Bear, also six, six eight E L A. Mrs. Field, six eight math. Mrs. Caruso, six eight science. Mrs. Fisher, six eight social studies. Mrs. Herrick, Library and Media. Mrs. Air, or Mr. Air, Music Band. Sorry about that, Dan. Mr. Jones, C T E. Chris Palace, World Language. And Mrs. Fauch, P E. And they'll have, and then the three that are presenting from the center school are Mrs. Mikulochi, Mrs. Caruso, and Mrs. Fisher. So rest of the center school, if you want to sit down and believe it's from up here.
So joining us on the high school leadership team, and some names will be repeats, so for the board, some of our leadership team members are the leaders for both buildings, including Mr. Air in Fine Arts, which is which again, arts. Jen Barvolo in science, Colin Dennis is here for English, Stephanie Poche for Health and P E. Taj in Santee from our Student Support Services, Chris Jones, Career Technical Education. Miki Klepper, our librarian, Chris Palace from World Language. Abby Sacco from Social Studies, and Sunny Saint from Math, and representing this team, tonight's presentation with Mr. Dennis and Mr. Jones.
Nice. So our BCS school plan, we've actually been working on this plan for a couple of years, so it was a multi-year plan. If you've been here in the past, you've seen our graphic before, and the point of our graphic and what we were trying to do is show how all of our goals work together and unites them to make our school better, but also that they focus on the portrait of a graduate and the district bonus course. So the first goal that we have at Bolton Center School is the school family and community partnerships. And really, this goal is to make sure that everyone feels like they are a valued member of the community and that we are all supporting student learning, not just us as students in the building, but the community at large. So you can see from our survey questions, we have, I understand what it's expected of my child to be successful, and you can see the data up there. And you can see the data up there. Then I feel informed about what is going on at the school. Again, some of the data. The school communicates well with me. The last one, my child's teacher keeps being informed of what my child should be learning. So this summer, when our leadership team got together, our goal was really to not just develop our new action steps for this year. But one thing that we really talked about was how can we get the rest of our colleagues to be a part of our plan because they're not getting there in the summer with us. So what we decided to do is we developed a lovely engaging activity for them to come back first day as we were together in the staff. And we didn't really show them the plan, but what we decided to do was say like, what do you think that we've been working on? You know, what have we been doing for goal number one, goal number two, and goal number three in the past? We had them brainstorm together and then chart it. And then we asked them, so what are some things you think that we could do this year and maybe next year to continue our goal? So we took what we had and we're now incorporating what the staff came up with so that we all have ownership of the plan because we think that's so important, that ownership piece of not just the leadership team, it's really about B C S, not just us. So some of our action steps that we have are the electronic communication. Parent Square, if you've been here in the past, you also know that I'm a parent in the district. Parent Square is awesome. Just the other day I was with another parent. We were out tennis with the tennis coach and I'm like, I don't know if there's a game this weekend and my friend popped out her phone, picked up Parent Square and she just texted, you know, typed in tennis and bang, I came up things from tennis and it was so easy to find. I love it and I hope everyone else does. Of course, Power School for the middle school, the Biwickley newsletters, which we hope are helpful to parents. They talk about what the learning that is happening in the classrooms and anything that's coming up, maybe even events that are happening with classes or even like whole school events that might be happening. Social media, hopefully everyone's following on social media. We have progress towards our learning outcomes. We communicate teacher clarity. I will say not being a classroom teacher, I believe that's still in the newsletters. Yes, okay. So still the newsletters. Assessment feedback. So looking at their assessments with feedback that's given. Our create family events that we have, winter family night. Again, hopefully everything comes out this family night. It's a really great time. Open House, we had a new format for Open House this year with the entire school that was there, which again kind of ties back into, we wanted to feel like a community. So we're all there together as a K eight school and not just K five and six eight. We are a case, we want all of them together. Meet and greet where the parents come in before school starts, first our parent teacher conferences and S L Cs in the middle school. Again, being a parent, S L Cs are great. The kids get so much out of it.
You want to explain that acronym, please?
Sure. So S L Cs are student-led conferences. You want me to give a little background since I've attended some of them?
You go ahead.
So they're great. So the kids work really hard and they develop this entire portfolio of what they've done and goals that they have. And then they present to their parents. There is a staff member that is part of their crew. And from what I understand, it's a big deal when they pick their teams. So it's just a great, I think it's great for not only the teachers because they get to know students that they might not have. So my son has had, you know, a teacher that he didn't have that particular year, but so it's just another adult that can make that connection with. Uh, let's see. Oh. And our great P T A. We wouldn't be nowhere without you. We can't thank you enough. Student showcase events like concerts and the art show, all sorts of great things happening inside the school day and outside the school day as well. And then parents coming in as guest readers, volunteers, and of course, parent participation during our surveys and field trip.
Hello again. I'm Allison Caruso. So I'm here to talk about our second goal, which is school environment. And this goal really is far reaching. It has many aspects to it. We've used the data again from the surveys to kind of focus our work and we are continuing to nurture a productive learning culture that's founded on positive and meaningful relationships in order to improve student outcomes and achievement. And that really ranges from students, you know, having their basic needs met, just feeling safe at school all the way to being challenged in the classroom and you know, working with caring and nurturing staff. So it covers many different things. You can see the survey data. We had students, parents, and teachers surveyed in this particular aspect. Starting with basically, I feel safe at school. And my teachers challenge me to think. Crucial. The school environment supports learning. You can take your five and six eight parents in that one. The school is caring, a caring and nurturing place. And for the teachers, I like working in this school. I know I do. I was strongly agree on that one. And then our action steps, like Diana alluded to, you know, we did this brainstorming right before school started. And we realized that over the past couple of years, we've implemented some great new ideas, but we came up with even more. So starting with our P B I S behavior expectations, our B R C expectations, we revamped that this summer and we do all of our P B I S classroom lessons when school starts. And we also added responsible technology use this summer. Along with those classroom lessons, we have different individual classroom incentives where students can earn dog bones, buster brags throughout the school, and we also are implementing a new positive cafeteria reward system for middle school to try to encourage very positive behavior. Cafeteria is, you know, their one time they can kind of let loose during the day. So we're just making sure that they're following their expectations and it has gone really well so far this year. It's been a good change. We also have our social emotional learning curriculum continuing throughout this year. And we've done our start with hello week in the past, which is part of the Sandy Hook Promise, which is really fostering more social connection throughout the school. And that we kind of brought back this year in full effect, kind of during COVID, it got put on the back burner, but that was a really nice addition to have back this year. We also have our morning announcements, which informs the whole school of things that are going on during the day. And it also promotes literacy skills and interest in cross-curricular books. They have a little snippet read every morning and get students interested in different kinds of books that they might not necessarily pick out. So that's a great addition. We have individual classroom incentive system. And last year we started our town hall meetings where administration and teachers meet with each grade level once a trimester to go over different focus areas and things that they're doing really well and pump them up about that. And also some reminders about things that they might need to work a little bit harder on. We have our passport system and planner lotteries again to encourage middle schoolers to continue using their planners and staying organized with all of their assignments. We started ready to learn last year and then also tweaked it this year so that really all students are, they know what's expected. They know what they need to have in each class to be successful. So it's really just kind of evening the playing field for just very start of class so that students are ready to learn. Student council has had a great revamping this year and we're really excited that student council is going to be doing more community building, leadership within the school. And yeah, reaching out to the community and giving back. So the students are really excited. They just announced the members last week. So they had their first meeting this week. And then Building Buddies also has a new look. They've kind of shaken things up. They're meeting with different grade levels, I believe, twice a month. Twice a month. So that's again encouraging more relationships between younger kids and older kids and having the school feel more like a community.
I'm Donna Fisher. Our third goal is effective instructional practices with the main focus for building habits of mind within teachers as they approach the learning in the classroom. We want to systematically and efficiently analyze our standards. We want to teach with clarity so students understand what they're learning and why they're learning it. We want to incorporate instructional, effective instructional practices and be able to assess their learning. The survey data is from both teachers and students. And the pertinent ones for teachers include learning from each other. Recognizing if the administration is encouraging collaboration and both those percentages are very high, eighty six and seventy two percent. And feeling that professional development is actually tailored to our students' needs. On the student end of it, students were asked if we show them how what they're learning is valuable outside the classroom. And I believe that's a challenge to us as teachers, but also to our community. When students go home and they're talking about their learning, how our parents in that interplay. So in that respect, we have fifty nine percent of students saying that they strongly agree that we show them how it's valuable outside of school. The one thing we looked at as a leadership team was the percentage that didn't agree or disagree on that. So we had twenty nine percent of the respondents who didn't make a choice one way or the other. So that could be, as you're saying, Kristin, that the, there's going to be a new survey, how we structure our questions, gets us the information that we need. And then if we give an opt out, we're missing out on how to data too, or that tells us something different. So in regard to student responses, we're looking also at those who did not respond one way or the other. The second student answered their question. They were asked if we notice as teachers that they have trouble learning. Fifty seven percent said that we do notice. Almost thirty two said they don't know one way or the other. I found that a little troubling. But again, it depends how we structure our questions. So overall, I would say that from the teacher aspect, our instructional practices are looking strong and that may want to look at how students are asked to answer questions going forward. In our action steps, there are some awesome initiatives being taken. We're continuing with our teacher clarity work with a focus on learning intentions and success criteria. And this has been a change over the past few years that we're continuing with and it's asking us as teachers to look at how are we structuring our lessons? How are we progressing through the skills? Are we starting with what they most need to know and then building upon that? And when we do it, how are we communicating it to the students? So we want them to know what are we learning? That's our learning intention. Why are we learning it? And then how will you know that you've actually learned it? So that's their success criteria. So teachers are posting in the classroom at the start of every lesson, this is our learning intention. And when we finish learning this, this is what you should be able to do. And if you see that you can't do it, then we need to go back and look again. So it's a very clear process and it's being done in every subject area across the school. It's making a huge difference in our preparation and what I'm seeing from students and their understanding of what they're learning. We are doing some cross-grade level strategies for reading and writing. And I can give you an example, the middle school in our professional development time has met. And we talked about how we do writing across the middle school. And we're using a strategy that every grade now is employing called races so that they will, when they respond to a written text or a written question, they're going to restate the question. They're going to answer it. They're going to cite evidence. They're going to explain the evidence and then they're going to sum it up. So that no matter which classroom they go into, they're going to be hearing the same language from the teachers and the same expectation for their written responses. We're continuing with the interim assessment block. And this is when we take reading and math questions and we put them into formats that mimic S back so that the students are being prepared with content and also with format when they're going to be doing these formative assessments, right? We want them to understand what they're going to be looking at. I don't know how many of you remember taking the S A T, but it was a lot of practice beforehand and they give practice booklets for a reason. And this is a way for us to help our students practice for those kinds of tests with the skills they're going to need. The Bullock About Bookworms, the K three reading program. And if you look further down, there's one called Imagine Learning Reading Program. These are the reading programs for the elementary and the middle school, I call middle school four to sixth grade teams. And it's going very well. There's been a great reception for Bookworms at the elementary level. I've spoken with a few of the teachers and I've been hearing things like the engagement is phenomenal. There, the questions that are being asked for comprehension are well thought out and they're asking students to go back into the text at a very early age to cite evidence. So that's building on what we're going to have in middle school. And that's really nice to see and to hear. And I asked one of the elementary teachers, how's it going? And it was like immediate, awesome. I'm like, whoa. She couldn't wait to tell me about it. So it's really great to see that happening. And that, and to see again going from elementary into middle school so that we have a continuum. The next one that you see there is a tier two reading instruction. And we are meeting with students in small groups at the middle school level and also in, Sandy, you guys are doing that too, right? Yeah. So we are supporting students in small groups when we look at the data and we recognize that they have skill deficits or weaknesses. We're selecting students to meet with us and it doesn't have to be just people in my homeroom. We're split up and as a middle school team of teachers, we're working with the students. It's been very, very good so far. We have had, we're doing six week blocks and then we're reassessing. So we meet for six weeks, see what the data is, help them with the skills, how are they doing? And then we revamp and begin again with another group of students and their needs. And I think the final one is classroom and peer visits, which I've been in a couple of classrooms and I really enjoy it. This week I went into a second grade classroom and you would think, well, what does that have to do with middle school geography? It was amazing. The teacher just allowed me to come in. I walked around the classroom. I looked at the different activities that they were working on and it gave me thoughts for what I could do even at my level. So it doesn't matter whether you're elementary or middle, we're all there together and we all have a unique set of skills. So our ability to go in and see one another work has been tremendous.
So before I turn it over to Bolton High School, are there questions for the B C S team?
I guess one question for me. Did anything surprise you at all coming out of the survey results? Nothing, you know, looking at it from my end, you know, nothing stood out, but just curious as you went into the discussions. Other than maybe some of the students answering thirty percent, I don't know.
And we looked at survey data, not from just this previous year, but across several years with the same questions and kind of see if there's any trends. But the biggest thing that I jumped out was that either agree or disagree. Like, how was that interpreted by that student? Because it was offered for students, parents and staff. So like, why, what was the reasoning for that? Maybe we should reword that question. Is that more of a no response? Is it more of a, I truly don't know? So that was a lot of the rich conversation over the summer as we worked on the school plan. And also kind of led to that activity that was described involving the staff. Like, you know what? Let's let them put their hands on this plan and we did like that learning walk in the library where they jotted down ideas for the upcoming year. So it's a good question.
I had a question. With regard to the town hall meetings, I think that's a really great idea. Are those student-led, like, can they ask questions about local, statewide, worldwide events that they feel like they might have questions about? Or is it more teacher-led with like an agenda type of fact?
That's a great point. I hadn't really thought about making it student-led, but that could be something we do right now. It's more staff-led. So we'll gather topics from like the teacher teams in fifth grade. We'll send us topics about, hey, we're seeing some comments made about this that are unkind towards students. We might gear the conversation towards that using our P B I S matrix. the conversation towards that using our PBIS matrix that we talked about, that we just revamped, to really guide that conversation. So what do those expectations look like? What are we seeing? How do you handle that if you're confronted with that situation? But mainly adult-led, but I do, I think there's something there for, we used to have a student, a version of a student PBIS committee. So I think kind of bringing that back in essence with now the new town hall, there's some potential there.
Awesome. Also, I really think that generally the, the high numbers that we had and strongly agree was, was really encouraging and more importantly, low numbers and disagree. But would it be accurate to say that we're not collecting data again from surveys until another year so that we can't really see? Because I know you guys are working really hard with continuous improvement on, you know, anywhere we might have, you know, maybe teen or low twenties for disagree. I know you guys are working on that, but are we not collecting data until like maybe next year's survey?
So right now the surveys go out each spring.
However, you have PLCs that meet, so let's talk about that because that's where the it meets the road, so to speak.
So we might only have the survey in the spring, but there's data being collected all the time. So whether we meet with the teacher teams or PD or PLCs or I hear from the community nonstop, whether it's I'm at an event and people are coming in, they offer their feedback about the new open house format. So that's like, I probably had fifteen, twenty, twenty-five parents stop me and say, really liked the format. I've had someone said, I really liked having the ten-minute bell periods running and it felt like I was a middle schooler again. I was like, you're the first one tonight. That's the relevant, right? Uh, but ninety-nine percent said they really liked the new format of a little bit more time to see the teachers that they wanted to see. So there's the formal piece of the spring survey, but we're always constantly bringing in information. What everything from our traffic patterns are to what's going on with our youth day events.
Thank you. My question was similar to Ben's in just comparing the survey from last year. Can we do that or have we done that where we could also see participation?
Yeah, I, I would say recently, this was one of our lower responses and, and I think I'm going to go back to, we had a table set up previously, like open house events and other events where we in person said, hey, stop and had little snacks for parents to do the survey, get something. And I think that helped garner a lot more responses. So it was a little lower this year. We hadn't done that last year. So we want to bring that back at some of the, the fall and spring conferences, have some chromebook setup so they can take their survey right there at the spot.
Well, that'll be in the spring.
In the spring, yeah, because the survey is not through the spring.
Great.
How long does it take to take that survey?
It's pretty quick. It's just click-clicking one of the responses and then, yeah, it's only fifteen questions.
Ten minutes, maybe?
Yeah.
Ten, fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
And so parents could do that when they come for a conference?
Yep.
Because it's, if I recall, and I may be mistaken, I saw twenty-four parent responses.
Twenty-five for the six through three parents.
That's still low.
It is very low.
But I'm going to offer this. That is not uncommon to see in education. As kids get older, elementary parents, they're all in. They're going to participate. They want to be in the classrooms. They want to read. They want to help. They want to be on PTA. They want to do, do, do. And then you get to middle school and now I, I heard and Ben's kids aren't in middle school yet, nor are Andrew's, but it's coming. And, or Ashley's, I don't think yet, right? But yeah, but it's coming, gang. And once that happens, I know Kristin can attest to this, Joey and you, now you're in the car all the time. So you have less time.
By the car all the time now.
Well, I know. That's your own doing. Um, but, but, and by the time you get to high school, you're just going all the time because kids are so busy. And, and so you see less and less participate. It's just what happens. So we would love to see more and we're brainstorming ways on how to get more. But I just want to throw that out there that that is not uncommon. Sort of the nature of the beast.
Talking about administrators at other schools, it's a similar pattern of response.
I think, I think it may be helpful seeing the improvement plans you have based on this survey. That would show, oh, hey, maybe I'll go fill out the survey because they're doing something with the data, right?
Yeah. So, so we're, sort of like, we made a little blurb at the beginning about ways we utilize the data in terms of reintroduce it to families.
I don't want to drag this on too much, but you know, one of the issues has been that, you know, many students in eighth grade are choosing to go to other schools. And I don't know if this is capturing that issue and that, that the concern of the board. And, and there are lots of good reasons for that. I'm not saying it has anything to do with our school for a lot of good reasons, but it would be nice to capture that. So.
You want to speak to that? About what you and I talked about?
Yes. And, and Superintendent Hackett and Mr. Rosselli and myself have been talking about, yeah, we already have the eighth grade visits at the high school plan, but just ways of really building that interest in all the Bolton students, but Columbia students, keeping that going, now even eighth graders, but starting even back in seven. So we're gathering some ideas now. We have some things in place. Because to your point, it's important to really get their interest peds and have them know everything they can with the high school.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bolton Center School people, nice job. Well done. Thank you. Now, Mr. Dennis, we're turning it over to the high school.
All right. Hi. I'm Colin Dennis. I met, met you before, I think. Chris Jones is with me here. Many of these are the same, in terms of the goals themselves. We do have a fourth one at the high school level, which we'll get to in a little bit. Because we think technology is really important at the stage of the game for our high school students who are about to go forward into the world and our high school faculty who needs to impart them with some knowledge to go forth into the world. But we'll get to that in a second. As Mr. Davy said, we, uh, there's a lot to be sort of proud of here. That, you know, there's some really great things in our survey data, but there's always something to work towards and that's really what we focused on in our summer meetings that we were putting together. So like Chris talked about our first time.
So again, uh, my name's Chris Jones. And so our first goal is school, family and community partnerships. And we looked at some parent data. And first thing, let me back it up. The goal is to continue to promote school-home community partnerships to support student learning. So everything is all about getting the students to where they need to be. So the first question that parents looked at, I understand what is expected of my child to be successful and eighty-five percent, uh, the data was overwhelmingly positive. I feel informed about what's going on at the school. Uh, over eighty percent of the parents agreed or strongly agreed. And the school communicates well with me. Uh, that was at seventy-one percent. So again, we have room for growth, but overwhelmingly the data is extremely positive. Uh, in terms of our action steps, uh, similar to the middle school, uh, we use Parent Square is a big thing. Uh, it's very easy for parents to access in today's busy time. Uh, we have a learning system where we post our grades on Power School. Uh, we're looking at social media outlets in terms of reaching parents. Uh, and we have ongoing partnerships with parent and community groups and town agencies. For example, uh, we meet with the senior citizens, uh, in town, uh, to have the students interact with them. Uh, and we'll do that twice this year. We'll do it in November and we will also do it in December. Uh, so that the students get to interact with the, uh, older generation, which I think is something that we are definitely, uh, missing, uh, at this point. We expand training for faculty members. We will be expanding training, excuse me, for faculty members on how to effectively use Parent Square, including the analytic, the analytics features. Uh, and we're creating opportunities to share student growth, uh, through parent-teacher conferences. Uh, student summit of digital portfolios, uh, which we do, actually, we work on in connections where the teachers actually work with the students and help them to get things uploaded. Uh, because we realize the portfolio is, uh, is something that's not going away. They do it at the college level uh, in terms of, uh, portfolios. Uh, our capstone evening will be, uh, something where the students will get an opportunity to present, uh, their capstones. It's a great opportunity. Uh, and I think we were talking about changing the format a little bit, uh, to make it a little more, uh, so that the staff gets to see all of the student presentations. Because at this point, we're only seeing, uh, three to four presentations and the students do a really good job. So it's an opportunity, we're trying to change it so that we can see all of the student portfolios. Uh, and we have arts evenings, uh, whether it be concerts. Uh, we will do a culinary showcase, uh, and we have art shows as well.
Right. Uh, as for the school environment, our survey data, you know, showed again, a lot of really good things here. Eighty-two, more than eighty-two percent of our students, uh, feel safe at school. That's great. Only seven percent waits, disagreed. Seventy-five percent of our students challenged us to think that's really positive. Uh, you know, we'd like to see that go up. That's certainly moving for growth. That's again, now I can't see. Environment supports my learning. Again, about seventy-six percent, uh, agree. Fourteen percent disagree. I'd like to see that go up. Things got cut off here a little bit. Uh, the school is a caring and nurturing place. Ninety-three percent of the teachers strongly agreed with that, which is awesome. And, um, what I found to be one of the most remarkable things in our survey data, which also got cut off on the slide here, is a hundred percent of our teachers said that they liked working in the school. I think that that's a really remarkable thing in terms of, uh, student data. I think that's a great testament to, um, all of our staff and administration for their support and what they do. So our school environment, our goal is to create a positive and supportive environment that promotes high expectations for student achievement. Um, we've got a lot of action steps that we can do for that. We are looking to sort of modify and refine our connections period, um, structure it in response to the survey data. We're looking to, you know, promote relevance a lot more of this, um, you know, making sure that our students understand, you know, why we do things. Um, making sure that they're understand, uh, that they're building their critical thinking skills, uh, making sure that they have opportunities to meet with their teachers to, uh, reinforce the skills. Uh, integrating our portfolio work and our portion of the graduate work into the connections periods. Uh, our transferable skills that they understand where, uh, those are translating across their curriculum. Exploring and implementing strategies to improve student executive function skills. We had a PD on executive function last year. We want to continue that this year as well. Uh, restructuring our climate and culture committee to continue to foster collaborative and positive environment. You know, positivity goes a long way. Right, going, participating, and I can't talk, it's been a long day. Participating in diversity, equity and inclusion for professional development and continuing to recognize students and staff for their achievement like we did here at the beginning, uh, tonight. As for instructional practices, um, it's a very similar to what we saw from BCS. Our goal is to cultivate a professional learning community that collaborates to improve instructions, student performance and achievement. Learning from other teachers at the school, the data's remarkable. Ninety-six point seven percent of the teachers strongly agree or agree. Um, you know, we learn best from each other, being in each other's classrooms. Uh, we always see best practices going into each other's classrooms. We see things and you know, you wouldn't think always, as Dom mentioned, you wouldn't always think that like it translates going into a science classroom for me as an English teacher. But I was in Jen's classroom last year and some of the things that she does, you know, translate across the curriculum, be it classroom management, be it just activities that she does with her students. Uh, my teachers show us how we're, what we are learning is important outside the classroom. This speaks to the relevance piece. Only fifty-one percent of students strongly agreed or agreed. Um, there's a lot of room for growth there. We need to continue to show them, you know, how, you know, what they're learning in the classroom translates outside of the classroom. Uh, administrators at school encourage collaboration among teachers. Eighty-seven percent of the teachers agreed. Uh, that's great. I think nobody dispered, which is also great. I know Daryl spoke a little about, you know, how we don't quite understand and neither agree or disagree. I think, I don't get that on this one. Uh, my teachers noticed if I had trouble learning something. Uh, this is another area for growth. Fifty-two percent of students agree. Um, sixteen disagree. You know, we need to get better. That's what that connections period is for and why we need to do some work in there. And my professional development is tailored to my students' needs. Uh, seventy-seven percent of teachers agree or strongly agree. And, uh, this is, you know, great numbers. We need to, uh, continue to make sure that PD works for what's best for our students. So our goal is to cultivate a professional learning community that collaborates to improve instruction, student performance and achievement. Uh, we're doing this with a number of action steps, um, building on that relevance. It's what's really, really important. Expanding opportunities for peer observations, continuing to get in the classroom, developing opportunities for students to receive clear feedback, um, feedback. You know, we did some of that in PD last year, finding connections. Um, we need to continue doing that as well, uh, designing, facilitating, running to, it's for faculty members and our PLCs, our PD, et cetera. Uh, implementing our MTSS program this year, uh, that's, you know, taking the place of PBIS. We've done a lot of work with that already. It's continuing to grow. And continuing to support the state accountability indices.
So before we go on to the fourth one, I would just like to give a shout out to, to both schools, to our administrators, to our teacher leaders and to our teachers for their willingness to dive into peer observations, to be reflective with one another. You know, you kind of open yourself up. That is, uh, rather on the cutting edge of, of where I think districts should be. And, and we've been doing it for a few years now and it, and it really, it started with the high school. And I, I just want to give kudos to everybody because to the point that I think that Colin and Donna both mentioned, like, we can all get better from observing each other as well as the actual observation processes included as part of teacher evaluation. So I just want to give a shout out to our amazing administrators and teachers and teacher leaders. Well done.
And as we mentioned earlier, we, we know the students inherit a world that is controlled by technology. So it's in our best interest to, uh, foster responsible see and effective use of technology because technology can be used for good. It can be used for bad. We want to focus on the good things that the students are able to acquire through technology. And in terms of, uh, some survey data, I feel, and this is parents, I feel that tech, that the technology available in the classroom is adequate to support my child learning needs. Uh, overall, very positive. Uh, seventy-six percent uh, of parents agree, uh, that we have adequate technology. And in terms of action steps, uh, implement and evaluate changes in student technology. Uh, provide ongoing implementation and security training for staff. Uh, in terms of, uh, so NOVUS is, is, is our tech, uh, person and they will be providing information for us in, uh, professional development, uh, staff meetings and so on. Uh, and continue ongoing PD in the uses and cautions of AI in the classroom because the technology is here. It's not going anywhere. Uh, so we just need to work on, uh, one, having the students avoid using AI, but showing them, showing them what ways that would be appropriate to use it, uh, because there are appropriate ways to use AI technologies.
And, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we're doing this in our leadership meetings. We're doing it through our key levels, our PLCs, our grade level meetings, staff meetings, fourth Tuesdays. Our early release PD is like tomorrow. We have a release PD. Uh, professional development day is like next week and then our team in content area PD's. So, yeah, the work continues. We're always at it. So thank you all.
Thank you. Any questions for our high school staff?
Quick one.
Team, yes.
For the question about technology in the classroom that was the parent, uh, answer, were, were there an option to, because it was sixteen percent disagree. Was there an option to them to say what they think might meet the students' needs with regard to technology or is that just open?
Monica.
I should say that there was, uh, there were a couple of comments. I feel that the issue tends to be that uh, some people think that the Chrome Uh, some people think that the Chromebook, which is the device that issues to students. Is not as robust as maybe it could be, but it's really not designed for that. If Chromebook is not a laptop, it's not. A fully functioning computer. It is just designed to be able to. Write your essay, do your research, you know, make your presentation. Uh, we can't like load programs onto it. You can access cloud-based. Uh, things, but you wouldn't be able to say load a desktop version of Office onto a Chromebook. It's not built for that. So I think that's where people found some inadequacies, but that is the device that we use uh for students to access what they need for their classes.
Thank you. I just want to say too, I think for the question with, in my interpretation at least, for the one where um. Our our teachers picking up on things that we're not, that students are not learning in class. I think your needers are probably more an NA because it's not a disagree. Yeah.
I mean, that's a big thought we had, and of course you can't, you can't guess what people are thinking when they're answering these questions, but we we did. We spent a lot of time guessing. So it could think about the high school structure with multiple different periods and multiple different teachers. So we're going to do anything with that. I don't agree or disagree. What we're interpreting as from an action item is. In some classes, yes, and in some classes, no. So we're interpreting that as an inconsistency, which there's going to be some of that. But where can we gain some traction? So we actually polled, so your question, I've actually done. Parent poll, student poll and a staff poll already this year. Smaller subsets, mainly the freshmen. We've done that to can, to continue, but the staff poll, um. We took a look at something we were doing instructionally and we were like. All but a couple of teachers were already on the same page. So we all met, we got together, we decided, hey, let's just try. Everybody doing that. So that came from survey data um that we did a week ago, but it also came from the, I don't agree or disagree. That must be some inconsistency because kids have five, six, seven, eight different teachers.
Um, do the surveys have space for free response or is it only? I think there's a comment.
Say, they do at the end. Yep, they do at the end.
And. What does that reveal?
I I think some people put some personally identifiable information in those. So.
You can redact that, surely.
Um, it's not, I, the way that it's kind of displayed, we could do it friends. If you're going to do something similar by.
But I think that was only on the on the parent.
Right, there's that one. There's no, there's no open-ended for student.
And that gets back to the completion rate, which I forget who asked that earlier. Um, you know, at twenty-two, twenty-one at the high school. So roughly ten percent. On one hand, that's not horrible. And it's been the last few years, but there was a few years before that that we were a little more aggressive. Like crazy pushy and we got more like twenty, twenty-five percent. But with ten percent, those few random comments, there there really wasn't. No meat on the bones at that, at that point.
Are you able to share those comments with the board though?
I'm gonna have, we're gonna have to take a look at it. There were certain ones that were very specific to specific parent. Child specifically, but identifiable. So even if I redacted a name. It it's possible in small little Bolton.
Because they were anonymous surveys, but the information, what was in there, like, you know, it is, you know what I mean? So.
Really clearly.
Yeah.
The other thing that occurred to me about the uh teachers noticing whether I'm having trouble response from students is. If you're a student who doesn't have any problems with your learning, that that might be a.
Correct.
Either.
And you know, I I want to give kudos to the high school staff too, right? Like with the development sort of, um, you know, merging PBIS. And our SRBI into the MTSS model, you know, more and more and more work has been done. At an individual student level to meet them where they are. And to help them to get to where, and you look in the audience and watch your.
I pull the data at least once weekly of every kid at the school. It's. A lot of data and a lot of time spent looking at what does this child need? What does this child need? What trends are we seeing? Um, in a smaller committee, that's not, that, you know, not all that information. It's. Said everyone at the staff, you know, nor should it, should it be at that stage, but it is a regular ongoing. So we, you know, the students may not realize we don't, they may, they may have the perception that my teacher doesn't understand when we're not, when I'm not learning something, but. We, you know, we're tracking data.
Lots of it.
A lot of it.
Yeah, I guess going forward, the things to think about is how to get more people to respond. So we have another survey coming out that we're going to be doing and trying to get everyone in the world to respond to it is going to be. Uh, the key, I don't know if you incentivize people with like goodies or whatever, like. Principal TR that suggested I, I don't, I don't know how we do that. And then structuring the questions probably will get a lot of those middle range things because. Like when I'm taking a survey, you might not have thought about whether or not a teacher perceives whether or not you're learning or if they're not. And like, I don't know, or like maybe somebody with some doubt. So structuring the questions is obviously very important, but. I and most, I'm sure all of the board really appreciate all the work that all of you put in over this, to analyze the data and to try to make the school system. And both schools a better place because I think that's why we're all here and that's what drives a lot of everything for both of you. To work there and our children to attend. So I thank you very much.
Kudos.
Thank you, everybody. Well done. Feel free to stay or this is your permission to go.
Thank you for.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Hey, Aurora Borealis, maybe tonight. Supposedly all the way that's.
Okay. Next, um, I have a food service update for you. So, um. So I'd just like to share that the projected revenue for food services for twenty-three, twenty-four was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred. And the unaudited revenue was two hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five. We received twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five more dollars than projected. From uh the one-time pandemic-related grants. The projected revenue expenditures now for twenty-three, twenty-four. Were three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and four dollars in the unaudited expenditures with three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. With twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars less expended than projected. We had a beginning fund balance of a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and had a deficit of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-one. With an ending unaudited fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I just want to remind the board for those of you that have been on here for a while that I have been, this was prior to the pandemic, sharing that we were. Uh, rapidly getting to a point where we were no longer going to remain self-funded. So stay tuned for a little bit more on that. But let me point out some of the great things that our food services do in this year. We've opted to participate in the star eligible students. This provides reimbursements at free level for all reduced eligible student meals. We have also started purchasing from Cloverleaf Farms using local food for school incentive program funding. It's a small grant, but it's allowing us to use. Local farmers for their local produce and bring it into the schools. Um, we have significantly expanded our breakfast and lunch menu options at the high school. We also have hired two new experienced staff members. At the high school with school food service experience. We are awaiting delivery of our new model breakfast cart at Center School, which will provide a larger variety of hot cold breakfast options. We implemented a new cloud-based software system. This is sort of like on the backend, but I'm just making you aware. Uh, the staff received training in late August and the system went live on the first day of school. And then um our projected revenue for twenty-four, twenty-five is two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. With projected expenses at three hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. With a beginning fund balance of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and a projected shortfall of a hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. The projected ending balance is a negative thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and. Um, looking to put the projected shortfall, we're going to cover that with choice. Again, this is a projection. What I would like to call to the board's attention, as you all know, you go to the grocery store, everything costs more. We'll start there. Next, minimum wage has continued to go up. And our food service workers have basically been around the minimum wage um pay. We have had to increase, increase, increase wages over the last several years because of the increased rate in minimum wage. It is going up again in January first. Again, we have to do some increases so that um affects. The bottom line. Um, but you know, with all our new food options and things, stay tuned is what I have. Questions for me?
If this trends in this direction, I mean, the next year or two. What do we have to do to keep it? Because right now we're looking at. Using basically our reserves to pay for the shortfall. So.
Correct.
What would have to happen in upcoming years besides increasing lunch prices?
You know, I think you may want to look at maybe. What other districts are doing. A lot of other districts don't have self-funded programs. That that has really um eroded over the years. Um. And the USDA does not and has not made it easy. Um. So I think, you know, maybe we look out and see, go out to bid and see what companies may want to offer. Can we afford them to run our food service program? What difference would it make? That would be one thing to look at. May have to write, raise prices again. That's what I got right now.
Not your problem.
It's still my problem right now. Don't you put me out to pasture yet. I will be out to pasture on July one. I'm into it. It's my problem.
Yes, about coming years.
Few weeks ago, John Oliver, I don't know if anyone watched his show, but he did a segment on food lunches that was excellent. I I thought it was really eye-opening and gave a fantastic explanation of. Why it is so hard to have the sort of lunch program that. Parents in particularly vault-like community would love for their kids to have with organic food and, you know. Home-prepared style meals and.
My kids like.
The kids like.
One hundred percent, yeah.
I, it gave me a profoundly new um respect for the work that. People who put together school lunches have to go through in order to. Do what they do for as many kids as they do on the tiny budget they have.
Correct.
Use and meeting the strict state and federal requirements that they have to.
Correct.
It's it's amazing that we need anyone at all.
Correct. It really is. And I really would like to give kudos. Um, to all of our BCS staff, to Daryl, to Beth, to Monica. And to our food service people for everything they did on our day when we didn't have water and what we had to put into place in. I I don't know, we were in meeting with them, what was it, ten-thirty that morning after I had ordered sinks and water and cups and I had people going to. Large places to get a lot of cups anyways. And we had to figure out how to make lunches for pre-K to, for K to eight kids at the high school. And make sure we had enough of things that it could be a brown bag lunch because we could do absolutely nothing else or the health department wouldn't allow us to. And uh, God love Christina, she went shopping um for me and got me chips that were allowable. And so we had enough to put in the brown bag lunches. So the the ladies and Christina and Beth and Daryl. Everybody, the staff, everybody did a great job. All right, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Um, on to unfinished business and the election of vice chair. So obviously our vice chair. Has resigned and I haven't gotten an opportunity, kind of forgot about this. To talk to anybody about her interests, um, the vice chairs. Largely not having additional responsibilities except potentially running the meeting. If I am running late, which for every month, I think I'm going to, but almost barely make it. But um you have to sign diplomas since uh hurts or risks or whatever.
That was Ben's job.
Oh, no, it isn't. You're right. I'm a.
No, the chair. The vice, the chair and the secretary. You're right. Me and Joe. That's right. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So. Um, obviously we need a new one. Um, so. Election of vice chair. Do we have any nominations for the vice chair? I mean, interested parties, any uninterested parties? Have a second.
Have a second.
Uh, do we have any other nominations that anyone feels strongly about? Okay, hearing none. Um. What was my motion? Um. Okay. So, okay, yeah, we're just gonna do a roll call vote. For this nomination, our one nomination. So I'll start with Chris Stevie. I'll start with Kristoffy. I guess, I, yeah.
Hi.
Reaccline. I then is, um, I will vote yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But I honor to be nominated and I'm happy to take the role. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, every week I leave work early and then I get stuck in traffic and I'm looking at the clock and I'm like, I don't know if I'm gonna make it like today, you know, like I'm rolling in, it's not because I'm. Doing something else. It's just trying to get here, but uh. I haven't had to do that, so um maybe I'll have to do nothing. Now you have all the glory, you know, you get to, as a former vice chair, you know, you get to, but you said, oh, wow, you're the vice chair. Okay, uh, new business. Uh, we already did the Washington trip. Um, tools for schools, IAQ management plan. This was all sent to our emails and you hopefully had a chance to review it. Do you have anything to say in regards to it?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief overview. Um, in twenty-twenty-three, Public Act twenty-three dash one sixty-seven required all local and regional boards of education. To provide for uniform inspection and evaluation program of indoor air quality within each school building using the environmental protection agency's indoor air quality tools for schools program. On and after January one, twenty twenty-four and annually thereafter. And then it was revised to be this January, twenty twenty-five. As such, we put money into CAPA to perform the inspections, which are going to be in process over the course of the long holiday weekend. Then this June, section seven of Public Act twenty-four dash seventy-four was signed into law, which extended the deadline for the uniform inspection of school building HVAC systems. Can't make this up, to June thirtieth, twenty thirty-one, rather than January first, twenty twenty-five. With a twenty percent phase in. Of each building each year and then thereafter, each school year must undergo complete inspection every five years. We took the required environmental protection agency's indoor air quality tools for schools program, added in our specific. Pieces like names and phone numbers for Bolton personnel. And I'm requesting uh approval for Bolton's indoor air quality tools for schools program as required by Public Act twenty-three dash one sixty-seven.
Rhea, do we have a second?
Second.
Um, any questions or comments about this? Are you not all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, standing. Resignations.
I'd like to inform the board, we received resignations from BCS custodian Joseph Wizina. And cafeteria food service worker and Linda Dustin Bray. Like to thank them for their service and wish them well.
Uh, do we have future business? All right, so we are now looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Uh, any questions, comments? So all in favor, please say aye. Oh, I don't get suicide.
I know, we gotta, we gotta be.
Adjourned for some.